All right, good evening, everybody.
All right, now.
Seeing 6 o'clock, I would like to open this meeting with a roll call vote to go into executive session for reason number two: to conduct strategy with respect to non-union negotiations or to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel. The interim superintendent, director of business and operations, and director of student services. And also for reason number three: strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted specific to MTA negotiations. John Burke, here. Jennifer Blunt, here. Bob Clark?
Here.
Kristalene?
Here.
Courtney Brightman?
Here.
All right. Please join me in the back for our executive session. All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. The committee has already taken roll call and has returned from executive session. I would like to note that additionally Ms. Terri Fleming, Mr. Jack Higgins, and Ms. Kelly Steele are also present. I see Lake Cam is here. Is there anyone else recording the meeting tonight? Hearing none, I'll invite everybody to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justiciable. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from March 12th of this year.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? I'll also entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes also from March 12th of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Minutes approved. Thank you. We do not have our high school student reps tonight, so I will move on to the FY26 budget hearing. Mr. Higgins?
All right, thank you very much. The budget process, as I shared with you at the beginning of the year, began back in November with meetings with the individual directors and principals with the identification, if we could, of finding places where we could make, find savings in the understanding that we were coming into a negotiation year, find savings in the budget around supplies and expenses. That process took, we took, went through that process over those individual meetings and then a larger collaborative meeting with all the directors and building principals that took place on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. As a result of those meetings, as well as follow-up individual meetings, we were able to develop a budget that was presented to the school committee on February 5th. That initial budget was a level service budget at a number of $49,135,217. That included a 3% increase for the teachers, paros, and secretary contracts, understanding that that 3% would be, for some teachers, at the intermediate levels or lower levels on the step could be larger than 3%, as they see a 3% increase from one year to the next, but also the additional increase from moving up a step on the ladder. We also included within that budget an adjustment of the manner in which expenditures for our IDA grant, which had been formerly in the form of salaries, moving it to out-of-district transportation. This was not an increase or decrease to the budget, just merely an adjustment to how the money was being spent in an effort to be more efficient in the manner in which we were spending it. When federal grants are used for salaries, a certain portion of that needs to be set aside for fringe benefits. When it comes to using that same money for things like out-of-district tuition or out-of-district transportation, it's not necessary to have that set aside. So more of the money, all of the money, I should say, is able to be utilized. In that case, we're shifting, right, from just the way that money is being used. So that, therefore, as I shared with you on the presentation, that caused the salary number to increase, but not the overall budget to increase as a result. It just was shifting where the money was going to be expensed from. We met with the towns' finance committee chairs, the town administrators, and the town accountants. During those meetings, it was identified that towns could not support the $49,135,217 budget, and, as well as the corresponding towns' assessments. On February 26th, through additional information we received from after the draft budget had been presented, the central office administration identified an additional $500,000 of savings to the budget, primarily as a result of updated salary information, as I shared with you in that February 26th meeting, and health insurance premium number that came in slightly under what we had budgeted for, and an out-of-district tuition savings that we had identified as a result of some adjustments between when the budget was created and when the, and February 26th, effectively. Further discussions with the towns identified a need to reduce the budget more. At that point, it was identified that we had already reduced the expenses and supply lines for the buildings to a degree that we didn't feel like we could reduce them anymore. Staff reductions were identified as the only remaining means to reduce the budget. Some of the reductions would be part of identified positions that would need to be reduced as a result of declining enrollment. At the most recent school committee meeting, it was presented to you, two budgets were effectively presented to you, with the understanding, the first one, draft A, as you received it, that had a value of $47,575,033. However, as I shared with you in that meeting, there is an indication that the state will be providing additional dollars to us in FY25 that we could be used, could be used to carry over into FY26, primarily through regional transportation that would be, that would carry over in the regional transportation fund. If that was the case, between the vote of this budget, which would be in two weeks, and if the $47,575,033 was voted as the top number budget, and then the state money came in, we would not have the opportunity to utilize that money to reduce the number of reductions, pardon the repetitive nature of the language. It is my recommendation, the recommendation of the acting superintendents, that the budget number would be voted at $400,000 greater, at $47,975,033, with $400,000 as a placeholder being used from additional money from our school choice fund, with not the expectation of using that $400,000, as we're already planning on using $800,000 in school choice in the coming year. But by having that number as a placeholder, it provides the district with time, additional time between the moment that you vote the budget in April, the first week in April, and the time when the vote's going to be made at the town meetings. It is our hope that the state will have provided us those additional funds in that time period. And as I had gone through all the scenarios in that case, each one of the possible scenarios, full fund, full fund from the state of $400,000, you know, some portion of that or no additional funding. So again, those, that would be the recommended number that would be suggested is the $47,975,033, as you have received updated budget books through, in digital form, for both of those numbers, for the $47,575 and the $47,975. Those are in those additional budget books. We have gone through, through the last several meetings, we have covered and discussed the budget book, and reviewed and answered questions relative to it. We have covered all of the departments, including special education, or student services, I should say, facilities, technology. We reviewed salaries for all positions in the first meeting, as we reviewed this. It was my intent tonight to just discuss a few items that exist within the rest of the buildings, but these, again, are those expenses and supplies that were identified early on as places where we could maybe reduce the budget so that we could support salaries for the teachers, the paros, and the secretaries. So if you'd like to, you can open up the budget books and we can talk a little bit about the first school in the, in the list, which is TAB 6, and it's Assawamset Elementary You can see that, as is the case for all the schools, some of the adjustments in the current budget that were different from last year, one of the first things, of course, is the collective bargaining changes that exist as a result of negotiations currently ongoing. We also have a 20% for each one of the buildings, has a 20% of the salary for the float nurse, as that float nurse is not located in the region, but actually located at each one of the buildings individually at an equal amount of 20% of the time. So that's identified as also a place where there was an increase from last year, as the float nurse was in added position after the budget had been voted last year. As we review through, you can see some of the places where it says positions funded by IDEA in FY25. These are examples of what I was referring to. These were positions that had been funded through IDEA, and now they're going to be funded through the general fund. That difference, though, is that same amount of money is going to be reducing the cost of out-of-district transportation in the FY25 budget, 26 budget, pardon me. There's an increase, you can see, for supplies, general school, of 28%, it's $3,500. This was, there had been a structural inequity between the two elementary schools in terms of general supplies, and so we, this was to increase the amount so that the two schools were in alignment for the general supply line between AES and FES. We turn to TAB 7, we can go to Free Town Elementary. Again, you can see, in the case of Free Town Elementary, there is an addition of the float nurse, as 20% of the float nurse. There is also a place where you can see, there's a, near the bottom, it's mentioned student activities. This is the Appendix C MOA, these are additional funds that were agreed upon in the MOA for Appendix C last year, so this is the increase. The reason why it says 100%, it's not that it was zero last year, it was, it was in two different lines that didn't make sense, so this was the reason that 100% is, because in this particular line, which is identified as student activities, and should be because of the nature of its, it is alignment with the Appendix C expenditures in the middle school and the high school in terms of its code, that's why it was placed in there. But the increase is as a result of the Appendix C MOA, which you have received previously. We can go on to TAB 8, the George R. Austin Intermediate School. Once again, the float nurse is one of the additions to this building, is an additional 20%, 20% of that salary. This too also had an increase in its, in its intermediate, I'm sorry, in the MO, so partly as a result of the MOA for the Appendix C. It was also as a result of, it was not fully funded, as I identified in 25, so if, this would be to fully fund it, the positions that exist under Appendix C within the intermediate And we can move on to number nine, to the middle school. Once again, you can see that there was an adjustment that needed to be made, as that MOA for Appendix C took place after the budget was voted, and so that increase had to be absorbed into the budget, and it is in this case. So you can see that there's an increase there, $7,225, in order to fulfill, fully fund the Appendix C obligation for the middle school. At the end of each one of these, you're also noticing that there's a line in there for copier lease and service. Many of them are, are going down, and that is a result of the leases, we now own most of these copiers now, but we will need to start planning for the replacement of some of the copiers in the district as they've started to reach their, their age limit. And if you would, please, go to TAB 10 for the Pawnee Creek Regional High School. Similarly, there is the need to make the adjustment as a result of the voted MOA, Appendix C MOA, after the vote budget was finalized, as well as the inclusion of the 20% of a float nurse's salary. And then there was, you can see that in about half, well, maybe about, maybe about halfway down, you see a line that says subs maternity and region line, where it was reduced by 100% the maternity line for the high school. That's because there was, there's one larger maternity substitute line that exists in the region line. When a long-term substitute is being paid as a result of maternity, it's going to come out of that line. I'm not, I suspect that this was one of those positions that, or spots that had existed over the years and had not been cleaned up from previous years, but I don't, I'm speculating. So I believe at that point, we've covered all the elements of this budget book. I'm open to, obviously, any questions that you may have relative to the items that we've covered today, or items that we've covered in previous meetings.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions? Jack, from the table.
I have two things.
Go ahead.
So number one, to add to Mr. Higgins' comment about the recommendation for the option B, the regional finance committee did meet, and as per the regional agreement, we did vote on a recommended budget, and the regional finance committee did vote unanimously to also support the option B utilizing the $400,000 as the placeholder from school choice. So I just wanted to make the committee aware of that. And then, my other question was, in TABs 9 and 10, textbook school-wide went down $20,000,
So $11,491 in the case of the middle school, and then in the case of the high schools.
Well, TAB, oh, sorry, TAB 8, I'm sorry, $20,207.
So the textbook lines reflect the accurate spending on curriculum that is purchased annually. So that, those lines were visited and were part of the cleanup effort to ensure that they were accurately reflecting what we are purchasing currently. There were some savings over time, amplified ELA costs less than previous, like buying sets of novels over time, so there were some savings in that purchase, but this is, to the penny almost of what we're spending with the increase anticipated for next year.
Has regional transportation changed since the last time we met?
It has not, no. Though I did attend the Ways and Means hearing that took place on Monday at UMass Amherst, so I drove all the way to Amherst, UMass, or Amherst, Mass. in the rain. Nothing quite like Western Mass on a rainy day, but, but a big part of it was, the purpose of it was to, to hear what is being said and what is being proposed by the organizations that are, you know, pushing for additional funding, and understanding that the Chapter 70 calculation isn't working, that when we receive, when districts like ourselves, which are, what they would identify as, hold harmless, our increases are going to be only those per pupil increases they're going to give us. $30 what they started with last year, and it made its way all the way to $107 per pupil. We only have 26, approximately 2,600 students, so it's not huge dollars when we're talking about the increase from the previous year. So there was two parts that came out of that meeting, at least that I felt was useful to know, and that is, there's a need for the state to identify a plan for the millionaire cert tax expenditures. Those are yearly expenditures that they have to identify, where that money's going to be going. And while there's going to be adjustments each year, they need to have a plan for it. And then the other part of it is that there is some political will to revisit and look at how Chapter 70 funding is, the calculation that it's taking. But ultimately, what I took from that meeting as well, is that we all, everyone here, has a responsibility to reach out to their, to their state representatives, their state senators, and communicate that districts like ours, regional school districts like ours, are not being supported by the current funding formula from the state.
Well, that's what, that's what I was going to ask you. I mean, the funding formula, they're saying they're going to change it every year, right?
I have to stay optimistic.
It's hard to do.
Yes.
Jack, have you heard any update on the governor's budget?
No. So at that, at the Ways and Means, the secretary of education, as well as the director for DESI, for EEC, and for secondary education, I'm sorry, post, secondary? College. They, they all presented the details of the governor's budget to the Ways and Means Committee. And the Ways and Means Committee is going to be the ultimate, you know, they're coming, they're going to be one of the last stations that goes through, as they go through the process of making a decision on what to vote and what, what their recommendation's going to be. And that, often, their recommendation is, carries a lot of influence in the vote.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jack? Anyone in the audience have questions specific to these sections of the budget? Okay. Thank you, Jack. Thank you. Moving on, old business, substitute pay discussion. We had started to have the conversations the previous two meetings, about where we need, where we need to be, where, you know, where we need to grow our numbers. Do we have any, any additional numbers or additional information?
No, we don't have any additional information for you, other than the recommendation, as we had before, to consider there being a two-tier. I think that's very important, given that that seems to be very much the practice from all of our local peers, is that there's two tiers of sub-pay, one for certified, people who are substitute teachers who are certified, have certification, teacher certification, and those who are uncertified.
Okay. Weren't we going to look into nurses as well, as substitutes, nurses and that pay?
Parent professionals as substitutes across the board.
No new information for you, but I will.
Okay. We talked a little bit last meeting about having an FY24 audit presentation by the firm that conducted our, our financial audit. They are offering to do it, to come at a school committee meeting in May for a nominal fee?
$2,000.
$2,000 to present, present all their findings, question and answer.
This would be May 7th.
May 7th. Any additional questions from the committee on that?
So the 2K would come out of EMD.
You'd have to identify some, yeah. It currently doesn't support in, in the budget lines for, in the business office, so it would have to be identified through something like that.
I would entertain a motion to allow the company to come in and present their findings to the committee, answer questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. John Burke, aye. Jen Blunt?
Aye.
Bob Clark?
Aye.
Kristalene?
Aye.
Courtney Brightman?
Aye.
Okay. Jack, what?
Yes, they, they had already, you know, tentatively committed for that date, and I just need, I'll confirm with them for a second.
Thank you, Jack.
Yep.
Okay. Last meeting, we, we voted a calendar for the 2025-2026 school year. We have a revision, a slight revision to that. I guess, Terri, would it be possible to speak to that?
Yes. So in past practice, the pre-K and K programs started on Thursday. Last year, due to the first day being pushed out, it had moved to the day after school started, and we did not catch that when we put the first calendar together. And so this calendar adjustment has first day of pre-K and K starting on the 4th. It is bold, but I did notice that the date in the box down below did not get changed, so the bold 4 is indicating that pre-K and K will start on Thursday, September 4th, instead of Wednesday, September 3rd, which gives the pre-K and K teachers time to be greeters and socially, emotionally wrap their arms around our first graders as they come in, not physically, but allows them to come in and welcome the kids and off the buses at the beginning, and put them on the buses at the end of those first days. It's really nice for them to see familiar faces, and then it also provides that opportunity for them to put the orientation materials together for the, for the third, and the parents to come in and have that half-day with the buildings, and for the kids to see the classrooms, and get excited about getting on the buses and stuff on the 4th. So it's a nice transition into the buildings for them, and it allows for the buildings to also run the first through third grades smoothly on those first days and have their, their time with the first through third graders. So we're requesting that alteration, and we will make sure to catch it prior next year.
Fantastic, thank you. All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the calendar with a, with a request that the verbiage below the September month be changed to 9/4.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. Now, thank you to the, to the pre-K and K staff for bringing this to our attention. Okay. I have some amended executive session minutes from July 31st of 2024. A decision was reached by the attorney general's office that this committee violated open meeting law by discussing an executive session on that date, topics that were not appropriate for executive session, and topics that were not identified in the announcement prior to convening an executive session. Additionally, it was found that this committee violated open meeting law by creating insufficient meeting minutes for that executive session. We were ordered by the AG's office to comply immediate and future with the open meeting law and amend the minutes from that date to sufficiently detail the summary of the discussions that were held. The committee has been given amended minutes, and I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written for July 31st, 2024 executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a meeting, I'm sorry, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, amended, amended minutes are voted. For new business, I will entertain a motion to approve payroll vendor warrants that are circulating on our table as we speak.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have to have a date?
Jen, could, could you finally pass me the warrant book? Oh, you have it.
You guys have it.
I'll, I'll correct my statement. There is warrants for March 19th, and only March 19th. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept warrants for March 19th of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Right, we have a, a Pontiquet field trip.
I believe, I, I don't have the paper, yes, Decca. Going on a field trip to, if I'm miscalling you email correctly. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Josh.
Providence, Rhode Island. Joe Solomon asked, um, to have a field trip, um, to Providence, Rhode Island for, to go to Level 99.
It'll be fun.
Is this dessert? Could you provide some details? Mr. Solomon, would you like to provide some details?
My voice carries, um, all the way up. This is the base game radio, you're going to regret it.
And a voice for newspaper.
Whoa. Uh, so our leadership classes, um, wanted to go to a field trip for Level 99, which is a team building activity. Uh, it's an escape room where they have to, I put them with kids that they're not really used to working with. They have to get the best score they can over a two-hour period. Um, it's out of state, it's in Rhode Island, at the Providence Place Mall. Um, so we've been reaching out to them, trying to get a field trip going so the kids can work on their leadership abilities and work with groups on decision-making, uh, making very quick impromptu decisions and trying to work together with kids they usually wouldn't, which is a pretty big leadership ability. So that's what the field trip is. Any questions?
How many students?
Uh, about 45. I take both of my leadership classes to save money on the bus. So we just go once a year and I take both sections.
Sounds great.
Are you going to buy them lunch?
Uh, yeah, if they win, I buy them lunch, actually. So whatever team gets the best score, usually I hope I cross my fingers for the team with the least amount of kids. The first-place team gets lunch in the food court for me, so. So yes, actually.
Is there a cost for the students to attend?
We're working on that right now. Um, Nicole Graff is trying to get some of the cost paid for, um, through their programs. I won't find out until probably tomorrow, but, um, the cost of the Level 99 stuff itself is about $30. The bus would be like another 10 to 15, so, per kid. But if they, if that comes through, then it should be a lot less, hopefully.
Excellent.
I'm looking for a third chaperone, so, I mean, Mr. Higgins.
Help you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Anytime.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to.
Vote approved.
Second. Motion and second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Great, uh, Reed's Collaborative and SEC.
You should have four papers.
I do.
Uh, so, uh, these votes are to, um, appoint Dr. Barbara Starkey as our superintendent representing the, um, representative on the Board of Directors for Reed's Collaborative. The reason there is two votes is because we need to vote, um, her on for the remainder of this year, and then they require a new vote for the school year, the FY26. So there are two for Reed's and then two for the South Coast Collaborative.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to support, uh, the participation of Dr. Barbara Starkey to serve, uh, as our representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to support Dr. Starkey, Dr. Barbara Starkey, I apologize, to serve as our representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to support, uh, Dr. Barbara Starkey as our representative for the Board of Directors of South Coast Collaborative.
Appoint.
Appoint, I'm sorry. Dr. Barbara Starkey as our, to serve as our representative on the Board of Directors for South Coast Collaborative for the remainder of 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? I will entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Barbara Starkey as our representative on the Board of Directors for South Coast Collaborative for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? All approved. Thank you very much. Great. We're going to discuss an addendum to, uh, the contract of John Higgins and Kelly Steele tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to table that until our next meeting. Can I pay for it first?
All in favor?
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained? That has been tabled. Student Opportunity Act update. Terry?
So we filed our Student Opportunity Act, um, plan in the 2023-2024 school year. Uh, this is an update to it. It's the packet that is. So the first page is a reminder of the areas of evidence-based programs that we are focusing on. Positive school environments, high-quality secondary pathways and programs, and early literacy screening and support. The second page is a reminder of the evidence that we are looking for over time. The state does require that we report out our progress every year, um, and make note of evidence of impact and note any changes or alterations to our original plan. So the second page is a mirroring of what was submitted in our plan. So our ideal, uh, evidence is a decrease in chronic absenteeism rate, uh, evidence of pathway enrollment increases, and increased, uh, completion of advanced coursework, um, advanced coursework rates, and then evidence of improved early literacy, um, and screening. And then our fourth piece of impact would be the increase in staff professional development participation, the decrease in educators that are inexperienced or outside our teaching area or field of certification, um, as one of the areas in the accountability report that, uh, we needed to improve upon. The tool that you, the colored paper that has the pink and the dark pink and blue on it, that is a heat map that the state provides, and that is where we identified our, our area of needs. So this is an update to the heat map. And, um, what we'll, what we found was that our absenteeism, uh, on our targeted populations actually decreased this first year from 21% to 20%. That work and effort has gone to the buildings, um, to encourage students and to talk to students to ensure they are feeling comfortable and safe in their learning environments, as well as reaching out to families to triangulate, um, the, the responsibility of getting our students in the building, um, to provide learning opportunities. We can't, we can't get the kids learning if we can't keep them in our buildings, so. Additionally, the students, our students with disability absenteeism rate decreased, um, from 29.6% to 21.2% in our first year, and that was, um, a substantial decrease. So lots of good conversations and, um, work to have our, our students with disabilities in the buildings. The other area that is being monitored is MCAS math performance. Um, we saw a decrease in grade six, which was one of our target, uh, grade levels. And we did not see an increase, so this is unfortunate. Um, we saw a decrease in, uh, performance from 44% to 41%. I will note, however, that that is not cohort numbers, that is sixth grade to sixth grade. So as we discuss when we present MCAS data, um, you are not comparing apples to apples, uh, in this scenario. We are looking at apples to oranges, but we are still being held to the target rates, um, by the state for this growth. Another area that we, um, are showing for evidence is our ninth grade passing rate. Uh, we had increases from 58.5% to 81.2% in our targeted population. So our, uh, ninth graders' passing rate increased substantially. Um, I will say, although that is a lovely increase, it is, again, not apples to apples, but, uh, it is, uh, it is a change. Uh, and then our students with disabilities increased from 69.7% to 80.5%. Uh, this 2025 targets, that is giving the MCAS target scores that are set by the state and the absenteeism rates, um, that are currently, um, set for our district by building at the state level. Um, we are, um, looking to meet those, uh, if we stay on course, but I can't predict what the MCAS results are going to look like. But we are confident that our students who, at the high school today, finished their second day of LA, ELA with, um, with enthusiasm and effort, we saw some, some really good effort, the kids worked hard. So we are hoping for those targets to be met. Uh, the page is labeled Section 1. This is the part of the information that goes into the summary, um, to the state that will be submitted. Progress of implementation for our evidence-based programs, um, for our positive school environments. We have had, uh, focused increase work in the student voice and stakeholder engagement in all buildings. High-quality secondary pathways and programs. We were approved for both the innovative career pathways at the high school and Project Lead the Way at the middle school. Those are both considered early career exposure, and, um, I think our students are going to enjoy some of the opportunities that these two, um, grants allow us. Uh, we continue to, uh, collect baseline data for our Early Bird and iReady dyslexia screener and early literacy screener. Uh, in fact, we have calls with the Early Bird Company to ensure that our teachers have enough information to use the data that is provided, um, because, uh, this is our first year fully implementing it. Uh, we want to make sure that they know the resource inside and out and what it provides for our students. So this was a baseline, um, data collection year. Uh, flipping over, I, those statistics were what I just read from the heat map. So then if you flip over to Section 2, um, we are not making any key changes this year, and our next steps to expand our, um, implementation will be to continue to provide opportunities for stakeholders engagement. Um, we are, we will be in our first year of implementation for the two grants, innovative career pathways. Under health, then we're doing a health module, and then Project Lead the Way, we are doing design and modeling, which fits into the STEM program at the middle school. Um, we are also currently in the, uh, process of refining our MTS implementation. Kelly Steele and her team have worked hard on, um, providing opportunity for, um, staff to expand their understanding and use of scaffolding and, um, strategies, uh, for MTSS. And then the last slide there is a, just some of the engagement and stakeholder, um, opportunities that we're providing. There are roundtables at each building, and student voices even in K-3 are strong, and they have lots of great ideas for building positive environments, and, um, that is reflected in the hallways and through, um, activities that are happening in each of the buildings. Uh, there has been, um, there will be some expansions at our open houses, and, uh, the two elementaries in particular are looking for those community connections with fire, police, and towns, um, to have them in, uh, to just, again, uh, just bring them into our educational environment and have them be a part of the learning that is taking place. And then we have increased building and district opportunities, including our care meetings, um, that are outward-facing meetings, and then we have increased our multilingual communication, uh, with the, uh, paraphrase platform that we're using now to ensure that our families that speak multiple languages are getting materials, um, especially sensitive materials in their own language. And then we have, um, put out there, and I've had some wonderful conversations with families just in the last week alone, uh, for opportunities to follow up on the competency determination and for technology and AI, um, getting those parent panels together. So that is all exciting work that's happening. This report goes in, and then we will report again next year and the following year before we write our new plan in 2027, 2028.
Thanks for the update. Any questions?
I have a question. The 2025 targets for absenteeism, why would they be different?
By building?
Yeah, like, and elementary schools, one is at 9.6, one is at 6.3.
So there is a calculation. I don't have the formula for that calculation, but it's based on enrollment and prior history, so they don't make every building the same target number, but they do a gradual decrease over time. So if your absenteeism was 20%, they're not going to try to get everybody down to 10%. It would have gone down incrementally over, they actually have a five-year projection, and that's public. It is on, uh, the accountability site. You can see what their projections are. I can send that link to you.
I've seen that. But, um, I think, isn't that the report card?
Yes.
Okay.
There's lots of tabs, you can get into a whole, you can click into lots of levels and get it, you get into a school, and then you have to back back out to the district, so just keep clicking or refresh and start over, either way. But if you're looking for something, I can try to help guide that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Terry. All right, public participation. I have a feeling we may have some. Our public participation shall be in accordance with our policy. Each speaker will be permitted a maximum of three minutes, during which time they can speak about topics listed on the school committee agenda for this evening. This section is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between or among citizens and the school committee, rather it is intended to offer citizens an opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. I kindly ask anyone that's here for public participation to please, uh, print your name and town, um, on the sheet that's on the podium. Is there anyone here for public participation?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
If you could just say your name and your, and your town, or your name and your.
Sure, sure. Uh, Dan Rutledge, uh, Pontiquet Regional High School. I live in Rochester, though, if that matters. Okay, so, as a proud member of the Freetown-Lakeville School District family for 12 years, I stand before you today with the support of my fellow educators to urge the school committee to reject the proposed budget on April 9th. Um, the original budget proposal included a 5.5% increase to sustain our schools at the current level of operation. The revised proposal has reduced that increase down to 2.2%. In a district that ranks 273rd out of 284 in pure, uh, per pupil spending in the state of Massachusetts, this budget abandons our fellow labors. Here at Pontiquet, the current budget proposal would take away vital opportunities that our district's children's need to succeed and compete. This proposal represents a setback for our small communities. This truck has seen a lot of miles. Some might say we should only be driving this truck on weekends. Despite its age, we love our truck. We drive it very fast every day. We swerve around obstacles and push the speed limits, surpassing many newer vehicles in our neighborhood. Yet, at the end of a long day, with our engines hot, we roll into the gas station, and what do our attendants tell us? Our Freetown Lakeville gas station, which already offers some of the cheapest gas around, can't fill our tank. How with this budget are we supposed to move forward? At Ponacquay, the proposed budget would undoubtedly lead to significant reductions in student services. Tutoring programs like TNT for struggling students would likely be cut. Class sizes would increase, limiting the amount of time each teacher has to devote to individual students. Special education positions such as paraprofessionals would likely be reduced, undermining the support needed for students with IEPs and 504 plans. Even our most competitive students could be affected, such as AP students, by reduced offerings. Furthermore, this proposed budget would completely disregard much-needed investments in maintenance workers, building repairs, late buses for working families, and turf fields for our athletic programs. We are a school that operates in a one-star facility but delivers five-star results. We outperform comparable schools in English, math, and science, and our achievements have earned state recognitions. It doesn't take much just to turn and look at the banner on the wall. School committee members, parents, and community members, as a proud member of the Laker family, I urge you to protect our Laker nation, stand with our Laker educators, keep faith in our students, and reject the proposed budget on April 9th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge.
Good evening. I am Alex Duff. I'm the music teacher at Grace, and I'd like to read you something. As a proud member of the Freetown Lakeville School District for 11 years, I stand before you today with the support of my fellow educators to urge the school committee to reject the proposed budget on April 9th. We need to do what's best for students. At Grace, the current budget proposal has a lot of unknowns. We are a unique school where students from both towns integrate. The way we operate is by having two teachers working together as teams. This means that you can't just cut one class. You'd have to cut both. You'd have to cut the team. And when a class for the grade with a smaller population arrives, you would have to cut a team instead of just one teacher, and it would balloon class sizes. This is not what's best for the students. The amount of students in up-and-coming grades fluctuates, which creates the unknown. We currently do not have enough custodial staff to clean every room in our school every night. The music department at Grace has never had a numerical budget given to us in the 11 years I've been there. Art, music, library, and physical education rely on the PTO. There's nothing left to cut in specials or maintenance. This is not what's best for students. We are a flexible and creative school that transitions elementary school students from two different counties into the middle-school-ready students. With any looming cuts to our building, we will not be able to continue to help those most vulnerable students in the way we do now, and we will not be able to challenge those students that excel. Tonight, the teachers at Grace are asking the school committee members, parents, and community members to reject the proposed budget. You have a voice, too, and we welcome you to stand with us. I'm going to leave you with one of my favorite quotes from Albus Dumbledore, Dumbledore, sorry. "We must all face the choice between what is right and what is easy."
Thank you, Mr. Duff.
My name is Jacqueline Hinkley. I'm a staff member at Freetown Lakeville Middle School and a resident of the Christian Inn. As a proud member of the Freetown Lakeville School District family for 10 years, I stand before you today with the support of my fellow educators to urge the school committee to reject the proposed budget on April 9th. At Freetown Lakeville Middle School, as well as every other school in our district, this budget would mean a reduction in services and resources available to our children. Accepting the current budget proposal would hurt our high-needs students most and impede the goals that we have together set out to accomplish through the hard work of this school committee, as well as our administrators, coaches, secretaries, paraprofessionals, and teachers of this district. There should be no doubt about it, this proposed budget promises to affect each and every student and family of our Freetown Lakeville district. Through our partnership, we have managed to be one of the highest-performing districts in the state while simultaneously spending less on our students and schools per student than many other districts. It's a testament to the professionalism and dedication of our staff and community members that we have overcome these setbacks and made up for budget shortfalls with an altruism that has led to an education at Freetown Lakeville Regional School District being one of the best public school educations that a child can receive in this part of Massachusetts. But we are at a serious inflection point. The incredible school system that this district has enjoyed is in jeopardy. Despite the efforts of our staff members, it is difficult to envision that their sacrifices and devotion to our students could continue to make up for further lack of investment by the towns and the futures of our students, staff, and the schools of our community. If the school committee were to accept the proposed reduction in services and cuts to public education, the detriment to our students and the schools of our community would likely be irreparable. This budget threatens the successes that as a community we have created and the education that is the envy of our neighbors. On behalf of Freetown Lakeville Middle School and all of those who are dedicated to the future of our community, we urge you, please, to reject this budget on April 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hinkley.
Hello. My name is Jody Soys, and I work at Assawamstead Elementary School. And my granddaughter goes to Freetown Elementary School, and my grandson will be at Freetown Elementary School. So I speak to you not only as a staff, but as a grandmother. As a proud member of the Freetown Lakeville School District family for 15 years, I stand before you today with the support of my fellow educators to urge the school committee to reject the proposed budget on April 9th. At Assawamstead Elementary School, the current budget proposal would deprive our district's children of the vital opportunities they need to grow. It threatens to uproot progress from the dedication, before the dedication of our administrators, coaches, secretaries, paraprofessionals, and teachers can take root. At AES, the proposed budget jeopardizes the future of our youngest Lakers. It would significantly cut student services that ensure equal opportunity. Reduced funding at the elementary level would likely lead to the loss of teachers, paraprofessionals, and interventionists, resulting in larger class sizes with fewer opportunities for small-group instruction, tiered interventions for struggling students, and support for our students' diverse needs. Investing in education gives our students a chance to pursue their dreams and become successful citizens in our community. At AES, developing early foundational skills in reading, writing, and math is crucial to each student's future academic success. Like any investment, its value grows over time. Without a strong foundation, students will face increasing challenges as they progress through the grades, hindering their ability to master more complex skills and develop a sense of personal freedom. As a district, we have the personal responsibility to make sure our students aren't held back by low expectations. We want to reward hard work, dedication, and achievement. We want to instill the exceptional values of what makes our Laker nation so great. School committee members, parents, and community members, as a proud member of the Laker family, I urge you, don't defund Laker nation. Join us on April 9th to reject the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soys.
My name is Sean McGee. I'm a graduate of Ponacquay and a second-grade paraprofessional at Freetown Elementary. As a proud member of the Freetown Lakeville School District family for five years, I stand before you today with the support of my fellow educators to urge the school committee to reject the proposed budget on April 9th. At Freetown Elementary, the current budget proposal undermines our responsibility to provide our Freetown Voxes, who inhabit the larger Laker nation, with the foundational skills they need as our youngest citizens. On the front lines at FES, the proposed budget represents a significant attack on student services and student engagement with the curriculum. If this budget were to pass, the first targets for cuts would likely be special education services directly impacting some of our most vulnerable Lakers, children on IEPs and 504 plans. These children, who rely on our daily support for skills development, accommodations, and inclusion, that exponentially increase their chances of academic and social success, are some of the most beloved members of our community. By supporting the original budget proposal of 5.5%, we can sustain the fight to ensure no Laker is left behind. We need to remain a school with the resources and personnel it takes to outperform the state in teacher qualifications, to have access to the arts, and hands-on and engaging math, science, and ELA events and curriculum. From Math Week to Science Week to Poetry Week, from trips to Soul Farm to the Freetown Historical Society, if we choose to undermine our school's strengths by causing needless uncertainty at the elementary level, these setbacks would likely follow our students through the rest of their academic careers. This proposal leaves some of our most vulnerable students stranded in no man's land, while administrators, coaches, secretaries, paraprofessionals, and teachers remain stuck in the trenches anyway. Tonight, we urge school committee members, parents, and community members to enlist in the fight, stand with our Laker nation, our Laker educators, and join us on April 9th to reject the proposed budget and protect Laker nation.
Thank you, everyone. Is there anyone else here for public participation? Mr. Plonker?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Plonker, representing the Lakeville Finance Committee. I just want to remind the school committee that the latest version of the proposed budget, the assessment amount for Lakeville, is about exactly $726,707. I want to remind the committee again that that amount is pretty much the exact amount that a two-and-a-half percent tax levy will allow to town of Lakeville. So we are allocating all of our tax levy, our two-and-a-half percent growth that we're allowed by law, allocating it all to the school district. That leaves no additional funds for the Lakeville budget to grow, despite our expenses increasing. Should the school committee reject that budget, and should the town of Lakeville vote as approved at town meeting, that will result in either significant reduction in services for the residents or potentially an override vote. And I'll remind the committee that an override vote this year is nothing all but, I'd say, not guaranteed, considering several recent significant daddy's voting votes, fire station being one of them, and the upcoming Old Colony School Building vote that will occur in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plonker. Is there anyone else here for public participation? Mr. Plonker?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Plonker, representing the Lakeville Finance Committee. I just want to remind the school committee that the latest version of the proposed budget, the assessment amount for Lakeville, is about exactly $726,707. I want to remind the committee again that that amount is pretty much the exact amount that a two-and-a-half percent tax levy will allow to town of Lakeville. So we are allocating all of our tax levy, our two-and-a-half percent growth that we're allowed by law, allocating it all to the school district. That leaves no additional funds for the Lakeville budget to grow, despite our expenses increasing. Should the school committee reject that budget, and should the town of Lakeville vote as approved at town meeting, that will result in either significant reduction in services for the residents or potentially an override vote. And I'll remind the committee that an override vote this year is nothing all but, I'd say, not guaranteed, considering several recent significant daddy's voting votes, fire station being one of them, and the upcoming Old Colony School Building vote that will occur in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plonker. Is there anyone else here for public participation? Thank you, everybody. Any subcommittee updates? Anyone at the table wants to share?
I already shared the regional finance committee update.
Is there wellness, health?
We have, our new meeting, our next meeting is not until, I'll say, May.
No update policy. Capital committee update?
No, no update from the capital committee at this time.
Okay. Is there any other business that may probably...
Yeah. I'd like to provide an update to the school committee about an incident that took place yesterday on a school bus, Bus 17, and it's seen occurred on Briley, the Briley Road rail crossing during the PM run with middle and high school students. As is the standard safety procedure, the driver brought the bus to a complete stop at the painted line to check for oncoming trains. After determining it was safe to proceed through visual and auditory checking, the driver began to move forward. It's important to note that the line of sight is significantly limited at this stop, so not able to see, you know, as a result of the brush and trees that exist. As the bus began to move forward, but before it reached the track, the bells and lights engaged at the crossing, and the driver immediately stopped. The driver then made sure the bus could be reversed safely and began backing up. However, as the bus began reversing back to the stop line, the safety arm engaged and contacted the top of the bus. The train passed approximately 45 seconds after the bells and lights engaged. No students or staff were injured. We provided counselors to the students today for anyone to check-ins to make sure if anybody had any physical or emotional issues as a result. We have been in contact, I shouldn't say the bus company, directly has been direct contact with MBTA regarding the lines of sight and timing of the warning bells and lights. We are also looking at, I would like to thank Freetown, we were in contact with both of the town administrators, as well as the, and in communication with Freetown specifically. Select Board Member Lopes came to the school, to the central office to discuss the issue and to offer his assistance in making sure that we can properly, you know, not have something like this happen again, certainly something worse. We are exploring the addition of bus monitors for those affected buses. In this case, we do, the monitor would obviously have to get out of the bus, walk up, make sure that there were no trains coming, get back on the bus. This is something that we're just looking into, but I want you to be aware of some of the ideas and concepts that are being discussed in order to make sure that we're safe. 14 out of our 24 buses are affected by, would be affected there across tracks sometime during their day. In addition to that, we are instituting an increased, I apologize for my voice, increased communication protocols with the bus company, daily check-ins with us so that we can make sure that we have appropriate communication. And then we also are looking to partner with towns. Town of Lakeville reached out with some additional training opportunities that their fire department would be able to provide, as well as the MBTA has a Safety First initiative that they, that we're looking into to provide some additional training for our youngest drivers here at the high school as we embark on having, you know, commuter trains, moving through the community throughout the foreseeable future.
Excellent. Thank you for the updates, Jac. Any questions?
Yeah, I have questions. Who is responsible for maintaining the lines of sight at the railroad tracks?
In our communication with the, with the bus company, that, while that particular crossing, this line of sight is an issue, they have other crossings that they have identified as well.
Does the MBTA respond directly to that?
Have they responded directly to that?
See your question, yeah.
So they, oh, about line of sight? No, we're still in conversations with them.
Mr. Higgins, I do notice we have some updated language from Habibin Associates?
Yes. So Habibin Associates has issued a proposal, which you have in your packet, for a Grace pool evaluation. The, you can read the, what that, what that engineering study would entail. They would be using a subconsultant, Aquatica, from Voorheesville, New York. They have also, they were also ones who did the engineering study on the New Bedford Pool renovation that took place a few years ago. So they also have access to some of that information as well. The proposed, the proposal would, for the engineering study is a cost of $12,000. We are looking into the possibility of being able to cover some, if not all, of that cost with outside funding. I don't want to share that information yet until I have a little more detail.
No. Appreciate you taking a look into it. Okay. I would ask that the committee look this over on our own and maybe bring it to the, the next meeting for a vote. Any additional questions, Jack, on this? Any other business that may come before? I'd like to publicly thank everybody that came out tonight. Appreciate all the support. I appreciate your professionalism. I understand the position that you're in. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstained. Thank you, everybody.